I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, in all its obvious liberty. Let's pause for a moment, silence please. Thank you very much. Welcome, the summer crowd. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens when there's time of a public comment for our to our action items on the agenda. We ask speakers to identify themselves in our home district. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable in length. If you have more information, they can be summarized in three minutes. Please provide leave behind materials for the board to review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thanks for coming. It's good to see your face.
Yeah.
We are maskless and I could actually put my glasses on and see you now because I couldn't do it with my mask on. Because my glasses would fog up and so the two were not working well together. Anyway, welcome. It's good to have you here. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda seat? We have a motion from Ms. Bynum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. Any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Mr. Ward, donations? Madam superintendent?
Fifty dollar gift card Marriott Ranch, ninety minute trail ride, Sweet Frog and Paw Pepper, twenty four dollars in coupon cards, pepper berries, a three piece jewelry set, plan a hand camera, a panther frame, bike stop, a hundred dollar safety check gift card, Taco Bell, ninety six dollars in gift cards, and Headmasters Club, a fifty dollar gift card.
Thank you.
And the eighth. So move. Motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Uben. Is there any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Mr. Grove, have you had a opportunity to review the bills?
I have and everything seems to be in order.
And we're getting down to the end, right?
Yes.
So we.
Lots of zeros out.
Lots of zeros.
Yeah.
So our fiscal year ended on June the thirtieth, right? And we began our new. Pledge, thank you, Mr. Grove. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Mr. Ward, Madam Superintendent?
Aye, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. The first report that I have is just to report back about our Leadership Academy. Every year, last year, we couldn't meet in person offsite like normal, but we have a Leadership Academy where we digest the previous year. So as you can imagine, the previous year had a lot to digest after what we've been through. And there was a lot to plan for and a lot of processes to go through. So we spent the last two days really going through data and talking about the comprehensive planning process, strategic planning for schools, school improvement processes, everything. So, and a lot of discussion also happened around the opening of school this year. In fact, we were just waiting for a call with the Department of Education today about what requirements or mandates might come down from the Department of Education or BDH. And it looks as though, right now, even though there hasn't been an official statement made about it, that they will align with CDC guidance right now with hoping that and really encouraging everyone to go back to school in person. Five days a week, yes. And that's where we were already. We already planned to open five days a week as normal. The masking mandate has been lifted. In Virginia, the Health Commissioner still has one in place for instructional settings until June twenty fifth. But that, July twenty fifth, sorry. That, it was a moot point for us because our summer school had already concluded under the Executive Order seventy nine and the emergency ordinance. So before that was lifted, we were operating under those guidelines. There really wasn't an issue with the Commissioner's order because it didn't apply. We had no more instruction where there was instructional interaction between teachers and students at that time. That was an extension of school year or summer school program that that was meant to cover. So what the Department of Ed and BDH will do if they align to CDC is encourage masking for all unvaccinated individuals in schools. There will not, it appears right now, be a mandate other than on buses. That has not been lifted at this point in time. That's a federal executive order for public transit, which does include school buses. So that is right now the mandate that is in place and that has to be lifted by federal executive order to, or federal action before complying with that. Now, the team talked quite a lot about that.
Does that mean that the separation on buses has to remain the same?
Distancing is not the requirement anymore, but masking is. We can still, yes. And they said if distancing, of course, they say three feet if you can, six feet is the ideal. But if it would prohibit you from getting children to school, just make sure everyone's wearing a mask and you get those kids in. Because now the data is very clear that kids should be in school. But with the, the question we keep getting asked is, well, will you mandate mask wearing at school? And the answer is, you know, we, we like to maintain the flexibility to make dynamic, data-driven decisions based on our community data. Okay, so right now, if things stay the way they are, our community rates are very, very low. We have very good other mitigation strategies in place. So I would like to recommend that we, right now, if things stay the way they are, encourage mask wearing for anyone who's unvaccinated, but make it an optional choice for those who, who wish to in schools. However, should we see spikes in, in the transmission rates in our school community, we reserve the right to put on universal masking protocols as a mitigation strategy. And there's other important reasons. Finally, the CDC and, and health professionals have really aligned with the quarantining procedures. Because remember, I, this was a pet peeve of mine that I would say every time, okay, so you're in a hazmat suit built by NASA, but if you're within six feet, they will still quarantine you, even though there's no chance of anything. So now they've realigned that to say, if you are masked and you're within that six feet, they won't quarantine you. So now it might behoove us, if we do see spikes in transmission rates, to say, we're going to universally mask because we have twofold agenda here is to keep schools open and keep everybody safe and, and prevent a lot of quarantining. So we reserve that right and we will monitor it frequently. But as it stands right now, I'm recommending, and of course, it's the will and pleasure of the board, that we encourage, like the CDC says, masking for any unvaccinated individual, but not a mandate at this time. However, should the data arise or the need arise that we would add additional layers of mitigation as necessary to keep our schools open and to keep people safe.
Are you, do you plan on keeping the same matrix that we used before?
Exactly. So we'll use the same decision-making matrix that we've been using so to measure the transmission rates in the schools and also the community transmission rates, what our mitigation looks like. We, and we, we're going to start the year with a lot of those mitigation strategies still in place. We still have our UV scrubbers in the, in the classrooms. We're going to keep that. We're going to keep our cleaning practices. We're going to keep our Plexiglas barriers in place as well, just to make sure. Because we don't know the status, the health status of everybody. And we've also had people on vacations and all of that thing, all of that. So I know that was something that people wanted to know about right now. And we still have one more meeting before school opens. But we'll keep the communication clear, but just to have that flexibility to move dynamically with the data is what we should do.
I just had a question about, so we were very careful to communicate the need for not sending any sick kids into school or on the buses. And we have the same set of guidelines around symptoms and fever.
We will keep the same checklist, the same health checklist. Sorry, we haven't, double click the HDMI one. Double click it with your finger. Hit later, sorry, excuse us. HDMI one, up to the left, the one in white? Double click it. And that should bring it up. Double click it again.
Slowly.
There it goes. That's going to preview it. Now, double click it a little hard. Yep. There we go. That should pop. Yay. So yes, all, the same checklist. However, remember, we did the same thing. We moved dynamically. At first, we followed our regular sick protocol. So, you know, fever free twenty four hours, you know, then we could move with that process. But then, remember, we did automatic ten days if you had symptoms of COVID. So we moved with that as well. So right now, we go on our regular sick protocol, but also ask all parents to look at that checklist. We don't need the temp checks just now. They're not recommended for low transmission rate. So at that point, but we would add layers as needed again to. It could be a seasonal thing, could be in the later fall and during flu season where we may need to amp up a few things. But if things stay the way they are and vaccination rates keep going up and transmission rates keep coming down, we should be okay to go as normal. And again, masks are required right now by law on buses. So that's, I can't really do anything about that unless they lift that, but.
What, what happens, just, what happens if there's no governor's rule, but there's a health department directive, as is this one right now for.
Larry, can you get closer so I can hear you?
Oh, I'm sorry. What, what happens if there's a governor's rule that says, we're open and we're unmasked? And there's a health department ruling similar to what is right now, that elementary school, probably twelve and under, would be masked if an instruction? How would we work that?
Well, they're aligning it right now. What they're saying is it's encouraged. They're not using it that, so it's encouraged for anyone, and we're going to use that same language. So it's encouraged, it's just not a mandated executive order because it's not. So it wouldn't, if, you know, someone was adamant that they wouldn't do it, it's really not enforceable at that point. You open yourself up, if, if you did have, like, let's say you had really high transmission rates or something and we, you know, didn't impose something to, to respond. But you could, as a school board, have a local policy that, you know, is separate or divergent from that.
I, I don't think we'll give vaccinations twelve and under before school starts.
No, and that's unlikely.
No, and many people will elect not to do it.
True.
Yeah.
So, and you're not going to ask and you're not going to find out. It would seem to me, we're at a point where, you know, we have a plan. We're going to use the same processes that we had in place before.
Which worked pretty well.
Which worked great. And.
Except that it was mandated to a degree. By Executive Order seventy nine, there was a mandate.
Yeah, and before that fifty one, fifty one. But before that, remember, it wasn't. And we said at first, it was that they, they could remove them in the classroom, they could remove them here. So it wasn't universal completely.
That's true.
Until later. So we moved with that too. So kind of similar. We'll, we'll watch it very carefully.
And we'll know, we have a meeting, a school board meeting, the day before school starts, August the tenth, right?
Yep.
So we'll be, if there's a change, we'll know it before and, and we'll be able to let people know. Right now, I guess the word encourage reminds us that if parents want their children to come to school with a mask, they're going to send them with a mask. That's fine. And if they don't, that's fine too.
Except on the bus.
Except on the bus.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or they could drop them off, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Yep.
Yeah, so, and like I said, we'll, we'll always monitor that and I'll keep that as a standing agenda. I know, as we go on with the school board, just to update you on our, our status and data, so you'll always have that in front of you. All right, other topics on the Leadership Academy, gosh, there is so much we covered. This is the year that we have to revamp our comprehensive plan. So there was a whole lot of talk about that. The theme was best in class because we've gotten quite a reputation in Rappahannock. Quite a bit of our materials were being used regionally, statewide, and we were nationally recognized too. So, okay, so then I reiterated to the team, okay, we got there, now we've got to stay there. Remember, you're probably going to be under a microscope all the time, so let's not let down our guard. We are still, you know, very professional. And now we get to really dive into the stuff that we all trained to do. It's not just COVID survival throughout the years. So now it's going to be about really looking at the data, comprehensive planning. What do we want, the, where do we see our students in our school district and everything after post pandemic in the five-year plan? So we did quite a bit about that. Breakthrough Leadership is the name of our book, study book that we will be doing. We did school improvement planning. We went over new evaluations, some Title IX updates, discipline, social, emotional learning, equity. So all of the required trainings that we've had to discuss. So yeah, it was a really in-depth couple of days.
And is it over?
It's over, yeah. Just today, this afternoon, we finished the work, so. But there's still a lot of ongoing work that needs to be done. But I hope everybody felt like they, they got what they needed to start the school year off and, and get to work.
I just had one question about school, school improvement. Is that, are we a school in improvement at this point? Or is it just a general, we're trying to improve at all times?
Always frequent improve, yeah. Frequent monitoring and improvement is always our goal. And every year, every school needs to have an improvement plan.
Yes.
We can always be better. So there's a process for that and tools that we use to make sure it's data-driven and through comprehensive needs assessments. And we're monitoring benchmarks along the way. And there's been a lot of changes to what accreditation will look like. The DOE is now going to implement a through-growth assessment beginning in the fall. But we can start that window pretty early for pre-testing, which is actually going to be kind of nice to let us know where the students are with regard to the standards, but also give us credit for growth rather than just a pass rate. So that's really neat. And there's multiple measures of growth, whether it's from the, the spring from the previous year to the fall, spring to spring, or fall to spring. So you get all of these categories where if you show growth and you're implementing these interventions for instruction, that your accreditation rating will, will see that impact. So that's all good, just a lot of, lot of, lot to roll out.
Yeah.
Any questions about that? Here's our team. We were at Quivermont Winery down on the Gid Brown Hollow, so right here in the county. It was very nice. It was a very good couple of days. And I couldn't be more proud of our team. They were so motivated and so enthusiastic and just so ready to, you know, really dig in and get to work. So I'm so proud of them.
They're a good group.
They're a great group. All right, and speaking of my great team, I'm going to introduce now for four point two, our new principal at the high school, Mr. Carlos Seward. If you'd like to come up and talk to the board about your entry plan.
You guys can hear me?
I think, you know, you might, I'm not sure how comfortable you are with holding it in your hand.
Very comfortable.
It's, that one doesn't work as well as these do.
That far away, you're good.
How's that?
That's great.
All right, great. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, Madam Superintendent. Thank you. I address you this evening as the principal of Rappahannock County High School. I look forward to, thank you. This is something that I look forward to since I had a conversation with Dr. Grimsby and Dr. Johnson back in late April, early May. And I've looked forward to this day, addressing as the official principal, attacking the guy kind of popping in and popping out for some time to come. I've come, just saying two things tonight, I'll give it for you. The first thing is that this is my fourth and hopefully final school division. Dr. Grimsby helped me out with that. I've participated in a number of Leadership Academies and my wife will tell you, I'm not short of observations. The Leadership Academy that I attended over the past two days was very thoughtful. It was very thorough. We went through everything, academics, accreditation, school, safety, you name it, we talked about it. We had some robust discussions. We were able to push back on some thought processes in a very safe place. And I believe that under the guidance of our superintendent, we're in great shape for August second, when our new teachers return, August fourth, when our returning teachers return, and of course, the big day on August the eleventh. The document that has been submitted to the clerk of the board and to the division superintendent is an entry plan. With the consultation and advisement of my division superintendent, we put together a document where it outlines in a very thoughtful and meticulous way some particular activities that I'll be engaged in short term, in intermediate term, and long term throughout the year. There's a number of constituency groups that we addressed there, the administration, faculty and staff, community partners. I'm here at the elementary school, my feeder school, had an opportunity to spend some time with Lisa and Jennifer the past two days, and that was amazing. And so these are some objectives that Dr. Grimsby and I came up with. As we go through it, Rome was not built in a day in a great school year, takes a hundred and eighty. And so what Dr. Grimsby and I have done, we divided the year into three phases. There's an initial entry, July and August. I was very fortunate, Dr. Grimsby allowed me to come on grounds, spend some time with our faculty and staff and administration in June. So thank you, ma'am, for allowing me to do that. September through October is the transition period. That's when people are, have kind of figured me out by then and we're getting to know each other a little better. And then, of course, the ongoing work that our division superintendent mentioned. We're going to continue to troll in the vineyard of making sure that we provide excellence and equity and be the best in class for every student that walks through our district. That's what underpins all the work that we've done the past two days and all the work that we've done the past four years in the county. At this time, this is an exhaustive document. I'm not sure on words, so three of those things are on paper. But if you have any questions, comments, objections or criticisms, the clerk of the board has a copy of this to provide for you, our copy. My email does work. You can come by the office and see me anytime you like. And I'll entertain any questions at this point on anything.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope, I read it.
All hearts and minds are clear.
It's good to, it's good to see your excitement and that, that things are very measured. And I'll, so, so this, this is every group that you identified at the top, you have initial transition and ongoing goals in every group.
I work for a tough boss. And one of the things, Dr. Grimsby and I, we sat down on June, oh, golly, fifteenth. It was in mid-June and just had a really robust conversation about some expectations that she had for me and my vision, my leadership, marrying that with the strategic plan that we currently have in place, the division's plan, the division superintendent's plan. And so really, a lot of that work is communication and relationship building, making sure that we have the right processes in place according to school board policy.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate that you've attended some student events and sporting events. It's just, it's really good to see people bonding already with their new principal.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. They were fun events.
I know, you looked like you were having fun too.
I was.
Yeah, very well done.
Thank you, sir.
Good, good entry plan and very well thought out. We're looking forward to a great time with you. And you say this is your last school division?
Yeah, that's, that's the goal, that's the plan, yes.
He's only forty years old, so there you go.
I'll be sitting next to her for a while, I hope, we'll see.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Principal.
Yeah, we look forward to visiting your house.
All right, item four point three, the Wellness Center update is very exciting. So I finally have some closure on this two-year-long process we've been on. So, and Susan, sorry, she couldn't be here this evening to address you. But we've been, you remember initially, Health Connect America, we had already put in place mental health supports, outpatient therapy in the schools once a week for students who were referred by our social worker who may need those services. And that took away that barrier that parents had at getting access to integrated care, especially having to travel all over the place and waiting for those appointment times and just so much. So that was in place pretty early on. That will continue to be in place. What the hangup was, was trying to get the physical care access in the schools and for how long and what it would look like. So remember, we had approached Valley Health, who wanted to be our partner. There were a lot of issues with setting up a rural health clinic inside a school as a, as a provider. So that's where we were running into some roadblocks. But when the telehealth opportunity came to fruition, after COVID, that wasn't such a foreign term anymore. So people was like, oh, telehealth, Zoom, yeah, we know all about that now. Had we started that way, people would have thought, no. So now it's like, yes, that makes a lot of sense. So Valley Health has agreed to provide telehealth services onsite five days a week with pediatric providers available to our students. So remember, the whole point of this was initiated by our chronic absenteeism numbers and the fact that over, gosh, I want to say eighty percent of those log entries for chronic absenteeism were due to appointments that they just couldn't have access to. They had to pick up their child, they had to go get the prescriptions, they had to pick up the siblings of those kids because they had to go somewhere. And it was just adding up so much. And when your accreditation is linked directly to that number, that's pretty scary. And remember, I kept saying, we could outperform our academic achievement scores and still lose accreditation based on that just because we don't have access to those things. So this is really great. So there's agreements in here, a business associate agreement and a telehealth document that is a memorandum of understanding that I will ask you to take action on contingent on a PATH grant agreement to come through. I will say that the PATH Foundation has been very much involved with this project from the onset. It's just without the official grant agreement in place, I can't say it's definite. But it would be contingent on a grant coming through because there are startup costs to this and fees that go along with it. The goal that we're trying to set up here is for something that'll be replicable for other schools with a very low contracted price point. So it, it becomes a sustainability model that sustains itself through billing, private billing, insurance, Medicaid, and that sort of thing. So that's what we're on to and it's very kind of novel in its, in its makeup. But yeah, we're really excited.
We love doing novel things.
Yes, we do.
This, this MOU has a place for a signature and that's your signature?
Yes, I just need authorization to go ahead and ratify this contract with Valley Health contingent upon the PATH grant coming through. And if you can take action on that, that'd be great. Because the idea is we want to launch this on back-to-school night. So we wouldn't have time if I waited for the August to, to get that in place because the Valley Health folks do want to set up. They'll actually be in the room right across from the nurses station right here. And that'll be a dedicated telehealth site. So they are going to provide a technician to run the telehealth equipment and provide the pediatric services and point-of-care diagnostics, which is incredible. So that saves, they can call up a parent and say, okay, the nurse, school nurse referred your child. And if they have consent, they go to the telehealth system, a pediatric, a pediatrician has diagnosed your child with strep and we took the test right there, we called in your prescription. So on your way home from work, go ahead to CVS or your pharmacy and pick up your child and you're done. So there's not multiple trips. So that's going to save a lot on the, and we'll measure the chronic absenteeism rates too.
And you, you're going to communicate this to the parents with?
As soon as we have a final grant in place, the grant agreements in place, these are signed and we're official to go. And then we're going to advertise and Valley Health's marketing team is going to help with the videos and marketing materials. And we'll even have it set up for demonstration here on back-to-school night.
Right, right. That's what I was hoping. If the room's open and the parents can visit it, they'll start to acclimate to the idea, probably.
Yeah.
Great, that's great.
So clarifying, the nursing professional in number two is our nurse?
No.
No, it's their nurse?
Their nurse.
Oh, okay, so they're providing the equipment and the.
It's a nurse assistant.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, it's either going to be an LVN or a technician or a LPN onsite, running the telehealth with a pediatrician on the line.
Okay, so that's, that's better than I had thought we were going.
Yeah.
We were going for having a school nurse.
It's two stages better though.
That's really.
It's pretty exciting.
The other, the other real positive thing for this is that what we had, we had parents missing many, many days of work.
Exactly, that was the other reason, yeah.
Without getting sick leave and so forth. So this will eliminate to a great extent the amount of time that parents lose in, in the process.
Fantastic point, because the other point to that is people were saving up the very minimal amount of leave they did have for when their children got sick. So what we were seeing was a lack of access to preventative healthcare too for children. So, you know, that's where you miss out on some, you know, dental issues and maybe some chronic illnesses that, you know, well visits really pick up. So that, that will help too with the.
Are we going to be able to do well visits?
That's the plan, is to expand. We're, this is a pilot this year to measure and change and adapt. We would like to expand to well visits, not just sick diagnostics, and then also hopefully to staff somehow. But right now, it's a pediatric telehealth pro, pilot program. It's the way we wrote the grant.
So I'm, I'm not sure if you know the answer to this, but I would assume that if it's a telehealth visit and I'm at work, I can dial into that telehealth visit that my child and the pediatrician and the LPN, where all, all these three rooms are together on this telehealth call.
It's a Zoom call.
Yes, the, the telehealth cart we have has that capability too. So you have an option. Yes, the, the telehealth cart we have has that capability too, so you have an option, you can say, wait, I want to be there for the visit, and you can do that, or you can dial in if you're offsite too far or whatever, so yes.
That's great.
It's similar to a Zoom call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's a grant.
Yes.
And it's free.
Yes.
And so...
Well, it's not, the, the medication's not free.
Well, no, and, but, uh, folks will be able to use not just Medicaid but private insurance for whatever care they receive, and then there's no cost to the school division other than an in-kind contribution of the space.
And so, uh, uh, the student body, uh, so I'm a high school student, and I can, so I find my way over here to use that same service over here?
Yes. That's the idea.
So if a, a, a high school young, uh, uh, eighth grader comes in and they've got sore throat, blah, 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 we would have to transport that youngster down here?
Yeah.
Some way or another?
We could, yes, so that, that's a, if we had permission to do so, and that's fine, and we do have school cars that can be disinfected and everything and used for transport, we do that now for other situations, so, yeah, that wouldn't be abnormal.
Could be very helpful.
Or a service gas station, we'll get there.
Yay.
Any other questions?
I think it's fabulous, so no, no lose.
It took two years, but we finally got there. Uh, four point four is just the, um, update of the out-of-county tuition rate, um, so that is here for your approval as we do annually, sorry, I have a lot of documents open, there it is. Uh, so the out-of-county tuition rate, based on the formula we use, is going to be eight thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars and ninety-four cents, um, with, for non-resident uh, tuition payments. Uh, additional service costs could be assessed depending on what's needed for students to, to come here, so.
And we're gonna maintain the same, um, rules we had last year, working in the county will waive that fee?
Yeah, if you, uh, there's a non-resident tuition waiver form and application process that folks who want to send their kids here can, um, ask for, so if you work in the county, own land or pay taxes in the county, and I think you have to work thirty or more hours in the county.
Thirty more hours, right.
Um, then you, you can apply for the waiver, it doesn't mean it will be approved, it depends on a lot of other things outlined in policy, but yeah, we still have that in place.
Great.
Okay, and then, of course, four point five is just your annual resolutions to make sure we can operate in the new fiscal year, so you know, your accounts payable, your general leave, payroll, petty cash, unused sick leave, and the VPSA technology resolution.
Petty cash was kind of funny. Why, why are we limited to fifty dollars? That's, that's the same it was, was twenty years ago.
Yeah, it, and honestly, I don't think we hardly ever use that for anything.
Anything, okay.
But it's there, um, up to fifty dollars.
I didn't want to handcuff you, but we could raise it if you need to.
It's up to the board.
They don't use it so often.
If they don't use it, then we're okay.
No, I think, you know, once in a while, I like, need postage or something, here's fifty-five cents to throw in petty cash or something, or we need to buy a stamp, or it's silly stuff like that, we don't really, hardly ever use it, right?
Okay.
Better play.
But man, if we did, we got fifty dollars there.
You could get a nice envelope.
Yay. Um, so four point six, this is pretty exciting too, so there is a, um, there are discussions and of a collaboration between Rappahannock County Public Schools and Wakefield Country Day School. Uh, so we've, uh, collaborated before on a number of different things, every year we have meaningful consultation with the private and independent schools in our district to, uh, go through, uh, different parameters and set aside amounts for federal funding requirements. So that's how discussions have happened in the past, so before our LFCC Ed- Education Consortium classes, we've pooled set aside money with the private schools and, and private school teachers could take training over the summer with, with public school teachers, it's been a nice collaboration. Um, there is a new, um, head of school at Wakefield, Paul Lerner, uh, and he and I have met a couple of times, and we also brought together the high school team, uh, to talk through the potentiality of helping out each other's organizations, because we have a similar issue with small enrollment numbers for certain classes, um, and the need to um, maybe leverage each other's resources to help each other out. So, um, the potential discussions right now are very preliminary, um, it started with the need for Wakefield wanting to maybe access some upper-level lab sciences, and for us to maybe access some classical languages or something like that. Um, and then it grew into this bigger conversation, well, what about, you know, clubs and intramural sports and, uh, like some other things that we could do? And we're like, well, you know, why not? These, they're all our community's kids, so why not try to form something where we could collaborate together? So we're starting down first with the low-hanging fruit to maybe look at ways that we could collaborate on Wellness Wednesdays, and maybe do some clubs together, like Wakefield is thinking about doing a polo club or something, that'd be pretty cool for some of our equestrian kids to go over there to do polo club or something after school, so things like that, just opening the doors to more collaboration in the county and maybe leveraging some resources, but I just wanted to get that in front of you so you knew that we were having those conversations.
Great.
Uh, we're a semester away from actually doing, I think, class, um, exchanges, but if we were to do that, it benefits Rappahannock because we can, uh, count those students in ADM as part-time enrollment.
That's what I was gonna add.
Yes, so you can.
They have to be in two classes, right?
No.
Only one?
One class.
One class?
If they take one class, we're allowed to count them as part-time, there's three levels of part-time, so one, two, and then more than fifty-one percent.
So if they take two classes, we could do more?
Yeah, so that, it could be a part-time arrangement, and we could also look at sharing teachers across, you know, so if we paid for half of a salary of a teacher and they paid half for a Latin teacher, for instance, or something, uh, we could look at collaboration like that. So we've opened that door, the hard thing with that is endorsements for public school credit, um, but we have funding that can help support that with Title II. So if that's the set aside amount we would use for private school anyway to help a teacher become endorsed, then we could do that and share resources, and that could be very beneficial.
Be beneficial to them as well.
Absolutely.
So this, like, if, the example of Latin could immediately affect people's fall schedules, because, you know, like, the only option for Latin, I mean, I'm sorry, talking a very narrow segment of the population, but, but a very narrow segment of the population has signed up for online Latin to finish their language requirement for their advanced diploma.
We won't be ready for fall semester.
Yeah, but I mean, should they not do that?
I would say go forward, because I don't know, there's too much to say that this will definitely be Latin, I don't even know that that's gonna be the need based on what, you know, the, the guidance department's gonna tell us and what we, we have available to us and who's endorseable and all of that, because I would hate for somebody to go ahead and take it and then have to give you independent study credit rather than, uh, foreign language credit, because that could mess with your advanced diploma status, so...
But deferring that class, for example, could be an option.
Yeah, I mean, it could, I mean, your schedule is, as long as you have what you...
You know, especially for a language class.
That, or two.
The idea of Latin III with a virtual platform is not as appealing as with the well-known good Latin teacher.
Definitely not, and that's what we were running into, interest numbers came way down with, uh, some of our online language, you know, uh, so that's an option, but obviously any student and parent who have questions about the schedule should go to the high school administration and guidance counselors to work that out.
Probably touch that.
Ooh, touch the screen, Amy, Amy! Technology.
So I assume that Mrs. Pond is all aware of all the changes?
Yeah, she was in our last meeting, so it was Mr. Seward and, um, Ms. Samborn as well, so we, we talked about a lot of, um, possibilities, so like I said, I think we're going to start slower with the club idea, intramurals, and try to get our feet wet that way, working up to sort of the slot-for-slot classes, and they were interested in looking at scheduling too, and looking at our high school schedule and theirs, and looking at ways we might align some things better to do more, so there's a lot to still do.
Yes.
I don't know if we're be ready to trade classes just yet in the spring semester even, but, I mean, we're, we're hopeful we could, but it's just, it's, we've opened the door.
Okay.
Really encouraging, really encouraging. It's very encouraging, I mean, it's a, it's a, an opportunity to see our community coming together and even in this dimension, not just like we did during COVID, but to educate our students together.
Yeah.
Yeah, beneficial for both sides.
Yep, mutual, mutually beneficial.
That's the hope. All right, any other questions about that? I'll keep you abreast of the situation as we move through the planning process some more, but, um, four point seven is the May policy updates, so those were all the policies that we posted last month that we spoke about. Again, no major changes, a lot of this was codified last August, um, just some, uh, I think they added the codes in there to what aligned, um, any questions about those?
So we've had these for a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read them.
Okay. Uh, four point eight is just to renew our VSBA Policy Services Agreement, again, VSBA is our association, uh, for the Virginia School Board, uh, and that's who vets all of our policies and has the legal teams go through everything and all those parameters, so that's where we get our policies from.
And we have to do this every year?
Every year, you have to renew the agreement.
I would, I, I, you know, I'd like to know how much it costs, it has a cost, right?
Twenty-one hundred dollars.
Twenty-one hundred dollars.
So that we don't have to do it all manually ourselves.
Right, but, I mean, they've got us.
They do.
They got us.
Look at all those policies, do you want to do those manually?
No, no, I don't, I don't.
Well, you look at twenty-one hundred dollars, and that's two hours of, like, legal...
Oh, right, right, right.
Exactly, exactly.
If twenty-one hundred is pretty cheap.
But they get that from every school system.
Every, every school district.
That's a hundred districts.
A hundred and whatever, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty districts.
So we'll ask for that approval if you'd like to continue their services, which has been very beneficial in the past, and saves us a lot of attorney's fees.
Yes. Of course, we're still double check, by the way, we're still catching stuff like, uh, Dr. Bolt.
Yeah.
Called them to tell them that, uh...
It's just a pronoun.
Yeah, it was a pronoun thing, but basically, you're all, the only superintendents allowed in the state were men, according to their, like, come on, I'm paying you twenty-one hundred a month, or a year, come on. So, uh, yeah, anyway, uh, I, I'm sure we will continue to pay the fee.
And that concludes my reports.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, did, did you hold that binder up so everybody can see? So this is what our superintendent took for a two-day, two-day meeting with her leadership team.
It was pretty rigorous.
That's ominous.
And they're all standing and smiling, look at that. And I have to thank, um, Ms. Newman too for putting this together, um, Amy did such a great job on short notice, because I'm usually putting things electronically for everybody, but I'm like, you know, there's so much that we need to write on and highlight and rip out, and, um, so I'm like, can you please put this together? Well, I was on vacation. And she, she did a beautiful job, and they were all sequential, and it was awesome, yeah, she did a great job, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, it, it's very important to get that team together, get kicked off together, so it's a great idea, and I'm glad it went, I'm glad it went well.
Even as important to do it off-campus.
Off-campus, yeah.
I think that's really, that's just a great way to go about beginning the school year.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to Headwaters' report.
I, I had the chance to meet in person with Brittany Dwyer, who is the acting Headwaters' Director for this sixty-day period, while the director, we, you know, we hold the Janos in our best wishes, of course, um, with the health crisis that they are, they're in right now, but luckily, Brittany is very able to, to carry on the torch. Um, I also met Sierra Chambers, who's also an alumni of Rappahannock County Public Schools, she was on her first day today, and she came in, it was nice to see her, um, who is gonna be the, the Executive Assistant at Headwaters. So the, here's the news, checks for all the scholarship renewals and the new scholarships are going out this week, it's over a hundred thousand dollars that is, that is being sent to our students and, and our alumni, um, who have gotten renewed other scholarships, that's, that's a great thing. So it's a great first week for Brittany to be sending that out, like, I love this chest. Yeah, um, and, um, the Summer Chorus Concert took place at the high school, and there were thirty-two singers and two hundred people came to hear the singing, I did not get to come, but I heard it was a resounding success.
Good.
After-school program is, um, like, is likely to start September seventh, um, and it'll run Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday this year with, um, an enrichment component and guest presenters, similar to last time. There, um, the Read Program is going to relaunch more like fall/winter and trying to re-gear towards fostering enjoyment of being reading and being with books for very, for the youngest students, um, that's the, the re-gear, less of instructional, more of a positive, um, positive feeling around books is what my understanding is. And, um, the Start This Mentoring Program is gonna have a field trip this month, they're going to Rainbow Therapeutic Riding and Hay Market over the mountain, which is kind of exciting, and there are six mentor-mentee pairs. Um, there are actually more mentors ready for mentees, so...
You know, that's great, yeah.
So that's, that hasn't been the normal situation, and, um, Ms. Dwyer is working with Miss Sickler to find good candidates to have the ready and trained mentees, or mentors, mentees for mentors. So that, so it's, everything seems to be getting into high gear, and everyone's excited for more in-person going into this fall.
Great, thank you very much. MBGS?
Yes, we did, we met for a change. We basically went through the budget, and we went through the, the, uh, there was an emphasis this year to be looking at the diversity of, of Governor's School, so...
The what, the what?
The diversity of students in the Governor's School, and, uh, the, uh, the new Director of Governor's School has put, put together a, a chart that gives us all the different ethnic groups that are now in Governor's School. And we're making some progress, I think, from that perspective. The budget was approved, we don't owe any more money, that's a good thing, no more money. Do you have anything else? We did, that's, we spent a lot of time on the budget, a lot of the time on the plans for the year, and going from there.
So how many, how many people are on that board, is it, is it, uh...
It's, um, it's every superintendent.
Right.
And, and one...
Board member.
Board member from every di- district.
For five districts?
Seven.
Seven districts.
Seven districts, I think, I could count.
You have them right there.
I got them right here, you want, somewhere. Oh, yeah, let's see, that's, Cole Pepper, Fuckier, Frederick, Rappahannock, Warren, Winchester.
Did you say Clark?
No, Madison, somewhere else.
Clark, did you already say Clark?
They were, is Clark still in it?
Clark is, yeah.
Clark.
That's seven, yeah, that's seven. And you guys, do you, do you always meet in Warrenton, or do you switch back and forth?
Unfortunately, we always meet in Warrenton at eight o'clock in the morning.
Warren County.
I mean, in, uh, Front Royal.
Oh, okay.
Front Royal?
Yeah, Front Royal, eight o'clock in the morning, that means I have to feed animals at six.
Yeah.
They don't mind.
No, I do though.
And then all, all classes for MBGS will be in-person five days, just like here, is that correct?
That's what it looks like now, yes.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're gonna go full-time.
Great, thanks, thanks, Claire. All right, uh, so officially, the VSBA Delegate and Alternate Document, uh, so I thought we had talked about this, I can't find any evidence that we did, but...
In the fall, we did, didn't we?
So, uh, we're talking about what happens in November, right?
We did for last year, but not...
I thought we had, he was the primary and you were the secondary, right? Are we still good with that? Are we still good with that?
I'm good with that.
Are we good with that? Okay, great.
I spent, I spent three hours on a Zoom that day.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's right, I was there. I, thank God, I was there.
Actually, to be, to be quite honest, the Zoom meeting was much easier than the in-person.
Is this going to be in-person this year?
It is.
Yeah.
Yes.
They think?
They, so far, that's what they're planning for, November seventeenth through nineteenth.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so during motions, we will then nominate Mr. Grove to be our delegate and Ms. Meyer to be our alternate for this year, right? Thanks for volunteering yet again. All right, moving on to public comments. Anybody that would like to address the board this evening? Anyone? Yes. Please come.
Yeah, we're all this time.
Please come.
I can't slide him down as I.
Thank you.
How's that?
That's good.
Can you raise it a little?
I'm Ellen Adams, Wakefield District. I am the proud mother of two graduates of this wonderful school system. It was many years ago, seeing the front of the yard, two thousand and three and two thousand and six, Lindsay and Alexander Neildor graduated. I'm just here to commend you all, the school board and the administration, for navigating all the challenges of the last year. So, just want to lend my support. Express especially excited about the Wellness Center. And as a licensed professional counselor, I love the mental health component. Just so many exciting things happening. And last but not least, very excited to have you on board. That's it. Thank you all for your hard work. Yeah, Ellen Adams.
Ellen Adams.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Yes. All right, anyone else this evening? It is an exciting time, you know? It's amazing, you know, it's amazing to me that you'll, you'll see people and they're able to do the school thing well, right? But when times get really hard, that's when things are tested, right? To find out, are they going to stand up to this and this and this, right? And we were talking, Dr. Grimsley's career as our superintendent has been one, and then this, and then this, and right after the other and after the other. And so she, she keeps looking forward to like a, a normal year somewhere to happen. It hasn't happened yet. So anyway, it's a great team that we have together. A great time in our system, so appreciate that. Anybody else? All right, moving on to action items. The first one is the eight dot one is approval. Approval of the Valley Health Agreement contingent on the past grants' approval and funding. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove's our second. Second for Mr. Rubin. Any discussion? Great job.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
Hopefully it will serve our students well.
Hopefully it will serve all our students.
Yes, I hope so.
Great. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, motion to approve the out-of-county tuition rate, which I don't have the number right in front of me.
Eighty-seven, eighty, ninety-six.
Eighty-seven.
And ninety-six cents.
Seven something cents.
So moved.
To approve the out-of-county tuition rate as was presented this evening. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Larry did.
Motion from Ms. Meyer, second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, approval of the annual resolutions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second? Second for Mr. Rubin, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, is there a motion to approve the VSBA May twenty-twenty-one policy updates?
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second? Second for Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, approval of the VSBA Policy Services Agreement for this year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Meyer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, approval of, Mr. Grove is our primary and Ms. Meyer is our alternate delegate for the VSBA conference.
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Rubin.
A second.
Second for Ms. Bynum. Before they can get out of it, all, everyone. Everyone that agrees, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. All, the motion carries. Moving on to new business. I believe Ms. Bynum has something she wants to hear.
Yeah, I just wanted to report to the board that I've had, we've had one meeting on solar in the last month with Amoresco and they're coming on Thursday and I'm at, Robin Bolt has invited me to that meeting as well. And they're a company that can save us budget money by converting some of our power to solar. So we're just in exploratory phases with that. Dr. Bolt is hopeful that there might be, if we wait a little bit, there might be money available from other streams for, for a project that could save us. But we, but, but it's, progress is happening slowly on that project, so.
That's great.
And, and I also wanted to say that, like, you know, over a while ago, we opened our courtyard back there and the, we had, we had that whole thing with, I'm also on the board of RapFlo. And we have a group, we had a great group of volunteers come just yesterday afternoon. And the heat, all senior citizens except for me, who came and helped to, to do a bunch of work in that, in that courtyard to try to, to try to get it ready for the, for the school year. But the good thing about that was that we're not relying on senior citizens to keep the courtyard up. That Dr. Grimsley and Dr. Bolt have worked to have a crew come to do the heavy lifting parts of that. So it made the work much lighter to realize we're doing some planting, we're doing some weeding, but we're not expected to also haul the, the hundreds of pounds of organic matter out. So, I appreciate, you know, working together and that, you know, the good faith that was put into that project and the community investment is being maintained by the schools, which is, it means a lot. And I think that it will yield greater investment from our community as we tend to investments that have been made. So, just wanted to appreciate that and appreciate our, these lovely ladies.
Senior citizens that are pitching in.
Oh, my gosh, they're amazing and they're so wonderful. I mean, they're just, it was, it was very energizing and they love our schools and they love what we're doing.
That's great.
Do you think it's necessary to put a little subgroup together for this solar? I know it's a, something that's going to begin snowballing here somewhere down the line.
Yeah, I, I'm, I will talk with Dr. Bolt about her, her strategy for going forward. I would have, I would like to see multiple meetings set up as, as we go forward with it. I want, I know she has the expertise, but it would be good to put together a group as it is something that we have all expressed interest in pursuing.
So what kind of group were you thinking about?
I really don't know. I mean, I, I think maybe one or two board members and, and three or four school people.
There are community members who.
There are community members that have shown a lot of interest in the program.
Right.
Yeah, some in your district.
And putting some community people together.
And if we had two board members, I mean, that's our limit.
That's true.
As far as.
That's why I said too.
Our socializing.
But if it's an appointed committee by the board too, just be, you, you still have to notice, take minutes and, you know, so just watch setting up a committee of the board.
Of the board.
But having stakeholders and having a regular update to this body would make a lot of sense. So we can do all the discussing in public, that's fine.
Right.
That's probably preferable with something like this anyway. So, even if it's just Ms. Bynum and Dr. Bolt and a few stakeholders that they're working on and then report back to this body.
Yep.
That'd probably be the best way to continue to update everybody.
Yeah, that, I think I'd be comfortable with that too.
Would, could we, could we have someone?
Would we identify stakeholders or can Robin identify stakeholders?
What we usually do with a committee like that, like we did on a lot of our other like reopening teams and equity team, we put out sort of a solicitation notice to say, we're looking into this. If anyone wants to serve on the team and help investigate and report back to the school board. And then we have a, a list, you know, and they can put their contact information on the survey.
That would be really, that would make sense because like I've heard many people who have expertise say many different, that the various angles would be the best angle. I'm, I, all that I do, know is that I have solar panels and they.
I think there's a different, a different idea for every solar panel that's ever put up.
Oh, right, right, is that the?
But it would be, I, I, I would, I don't know whether the board has to do anything formal to do that.
Well, I would think that even this meeting would be enough to say to the public, if you're interested in taking part in any kind of group that's going to be providing ideas or judgments about the various plans that we have, to contact Dr. Bolt. Contact the central office and let them know that you're interested in participating. And we'll go from there.
Throw something on Facebook?
Yeah, we can. We'll put out something.
Great.
Yeah, we can send it out. That's, that's good.
Just kind of a, kind of a working group, you know, that.
Yeah, working group.
With people that know what they're talking about.
You want, you want not all pros, you want somebody who doesn't. Get them outside.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Bynum. So, since we're talking about working groups, I'll just mention where we're at with the SIF team. So, what was, what did that stand for again?
The School Innovative Financial Task Force.
School Innovative Funding Task Force, right? And we had three teams and I'm on the first team along with quite a cast of characters. Gary Curry's on the team, John McCarthy, Paige, Glenny. I have a list, I should have just brought the list, but, but I'm going to say there's six or seven of us on that team. And we had our first meeting three, three weeks ago perhaps, and maybe four. And went through, you know, what is our, what are our objectives, what are the various ideas? And, and that lasted, I'm going to say, an hour and a half. And the do-outs from that are what we're currently working on. And we have another meeting planned the first week of August, if I remember right. I set it up, but I don't know the data right now. And so we'll be getting back together. And our task was strictly around the LCI, the Local Composite Index, and the various parameters of that. And are there things that we could do as a community that could improve our standing as far as the LCI? Because that was really the focus of our team, Panther Team Number One. Panther Team Number Two, Dr. Grimsley had the lead on and I think you guys are still working too.
Yes, so we've met several times already. Part of what we did was to compile a database of all of the categories of state funding over the last ten bienniums for every school district in Virginia. So that was our first task. And we've done that and I think it's the only database like that of its kind. But it gave us a really powerful visual to see and study whether or not there were other districts that were receiving supplemental basic aid, where there were major jumps in incentivized programs or lottery-funded programs, just so we could open up conversations with those districts. But what was interesting is we found that there is no other school district that uses a supplemental basic aid code. Not a single one. So we are the only ones that have used that. The only ones. So we were hoping to find something else where other districts have used that. But that was important for us to know. Another thing we came out with was other districts that look similar to us as far as ADM, LCI, overall county population and things like that. So, our group separated out to contact the Commissioner of Revenue in each of those places too, to see if they have a similar tax structure or revenue generating structure. Where, you know, in Rappahannock, we only have fourteen percent of our land that generates revenue at fair market value, just fourteen percent. So when you incorporate that into, and put the LCI in, that's why the funding of the schools feels such, like, like such a large local burden because it kind of is, because of the state funding formula is pretty inequitable. So, that was interesting. So we've been contacting these different districts to see and right now, we, we haven't found that disparity. And also a disparity in the average, the AGI. So your adjusted gross income in the county comparatively in your whole demographic and your school community. So between those things, we are super unique. So that, that's been kind of troublesome, but it gives us some strength, I think, in going back to COSARS and the General Assembly to maybe try to leverage some additional funding. Our Madison Agreement is going to have to be renegotiated in the next few years or so. And I know initially that the county wanted to go with Page County because they have a more beneficial LCI, right? They're a lot lower than Madison is. But back then, there really wasn't a lot we could trade. Now there is. They have a new tech center over there. They have some interest in helping us, the LFCC presence over there. We have a really great opportunity to maybe change the Madison Agreement to the Page County Agreement.
Or, or to have more than one.
Or to have more than one.
Right.
I didn't see anything in there, but I would imagine that, I don't know that you can use two because it's the one line of the state funding. You might have to break it into two separate lines. I don't know that will break their calculus or not, but we might just mess up the whole state system. We try to do that. But if we were to switch it even, then we would get a much lower. Because right now Madison's is at like a point six-seven and Page is at point three-two. So it'd almost double our, yeah. It would like double our amount of supplemental basic aid theoretically.
Right.
So it's something we are going to explore.
We don't, we don't get the whole three-two, but.
What?
You get a portion.
Couple of hundred.
You would get the supplemental basic aid line.
Right.
Based on their LCI.
On their LCI.
If you have a trade agreement that's beneficial to both parties. So that's something I can open the door. I have not met their new superintendent yet, but.
I know, I would imagine too, though, that Madison, Madison has grown used to our agreement and the benefits of our agreement to them. So it could be hardship for them too.
Well, and that's why we'll discuss and see where we, where we find out. But it opened the door to that discussion. Panther Team Three, I'm also sort of serving on that too and helping. That's the philanthropy team and really exciting things happening there too. Because I think everyone is now engaged in the conversation about this really unique, funny, inequitable funding formula that's pushing the county into this situation. And people who, through no fault of their own, have inadvertently affected the LCI or the AGI disparity now want to give back to the schools. So there's mechanism into that. And as Gary Achill talked about last time, there's a renewed effort to produce some type of a retention recruitment, best-in-class kind of grant toward keeping the, the best kind of instructors here, best staff and what, what makes Rappahannock so special. And so those efforts are really making some headway. So we might be able to see something from that soon.
Right. And the, the objective of all three of these teams is to, to be short-lived and to come back to bodies like this one and the supervisors with the data that was collected at that time. And just so that it becomes a more public conversation around what the findings were. So that's the objective. It's probably going to be fall, closer to the end of the year, I think, before we're going to have anything written down. But at least it's something that got kicked off, it seems to be functioning. And if there are people that want to be involved in those types of conversations that aren't currently invited, you have something critical to add, you need to contact, I would start with either Mr. Curry or, or Dr. Grimsley. And we'll get you farmed out to the right team. All right, is anything else, under new business?
Yeah, I do. I've had a few inquiries about the possibility of us re-establishing an ROTC program. We had an ROTC program with Culpeper a number of years ago, five, six years ago, I guess it was. And it kind of, just kind of went away for some reason. But it would be, I, I guess we would ask the superintendent to inquire and see whether Culpeper has something, whether or not we have kids that are interested. We've had a couple, three kids every year that have enlisted and gone into the service. And this might be another way to promote after-graduation activities for kids.
Or, or maybe it could be part of our agreement with Page County.
If they have an ROTC program.
Well, you don't know.
Well, we could start one, they could send their kids.
Yeah.
Anyway, I've, I've had some inquiries and I would like for us to.
Explore the idea again. It's been a long time since we talked about it.
It has.
When, when did we last have a program? Do you know or?
I'm pardon?
You know, when we last had a ROTC?
We had ROTC probably eight years ago, seven years ago.
And it lasted a few years and what happened was with that agreement, the, the numbers dwindled and the cost to transport students to that program just became too high to really keep the program going. And also there were some fundamental issues with the, the, some of the programmatic responsibilities too and students' ability to commit to the entire program. So it just, it really did fizzled out when we had it. But we can explore this.
It was not really well-done, but it could get better.
Definitely.
Yeah. Great, thank you, Mr. Grove. Is there anything else this evening? Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is August the tenth at six-thirty. I would assume we're going to continue to meet in here.
It's up to you.
Until, you know, I, I'm not sure how long we still have to. You know, we didn't used to sit this far apart, just so you can.
Do you think we could set the tables in more of a horseshoe shape next time if we're in here? We have a lot of space. Because I could see Ms. Meyer like ever.
We could put two people to a table and you would cut your table.
I mean, at some point, we could move back to a smaller room that's easier to set up and tear down and that kind of thing too.
This is sort of.
What's the, you know, what's easier for the system? I think that's the best way to do it. What's easiest for you guys?
It's, it, also having it in here probably keeps it, it used to be the sort of the banned students thing they did, which.
We're not doing it.
Which we're not doing that.
No, we haven't.
It's, it's closer to the parking lot too.
Yeah, it is, closer to the parking lot. Yeah, it is closer to the parking lot. Easy to find for the public.
So let's just ask our leadership if whatever's the easiest thing that makes us the least intrusive as far as setting up and tearing down. And we don't need to be this far apart, do we?
You don't need to be. You can be as close as you want to be.
Yeah.
I don't think we have to do this anymore, right? So a lesser number of tables could be set up, just whatever it takes to make it easier.
Put two, two at a table and you've got it.
Yeah.
You've got three tables.
I'm wondering about the sound, though, to those who are trying to access the meeting. Is it hard to hear out there? Is it? Because I've heard some complaints. I have, okay, I have heard some complaints in this venue that it's hard for those trying to access the meeting to hear us.
Especially with the air.
Right.
So maybe it would be better to.
The bandroom probably has better acoustics for a meeting like this, too. I don't, I don't know.
Would you like it to move it back for the next meeting or?
We should probably just stick with this now, right?
Okay.
So let's, we'll get information.
Let's wait until September, make a decision.
Sure.
Yeah, tell us, tell us next month if there's an easier way.
Okay.
And then we'll decide something. All right?
Sounds good.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
We do. Move that the board convene in closed session for following purpose, discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional positions, classified positions, coaching positions, resignations of a classified position, and a professional position pursuant to code, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rubin, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered. So we're gonna, we're going to recess at the library for closed session. We'll be back in ten minutes and, and debrief you about closed session and, and do our certifications